Good evening, I'll be filling in for Mayor Minkoff tonight as Borough Council President. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been approved by filing a copy thereof with a municipal clerk on January 7th, 2013, faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2013, and at 8:47 a.m., and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor of the Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on January 8th, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. The fire exits are both at your right and your left, and there are assisted listening devices available if so needed. All right? Let's go. Uh, the legislature's allegiance, Alan, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Minkoff, Councilwoman Beryl Mitler, Councilman Erickson, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, Councilman Malay, Councilman Potts, Councilwoman Walcovitz, Borough Attorney Schmier, Borough Administrator Kovak.
Here.
Motion to approve minutes of the regular and conference meetings held January 15th, 2013, February 5th, 2013, February 19th, March 5th, March 19th, April 2nd, April 16th, May 5th, May 21st, and June 5th, all in 2013, as distributed. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, pass it. Approved. And next on the agenda would be the Main Street Minute. Jamie?
Uh, thank you very much. We are continuing to move forward on the redesign of the Highland Park website, the farm, which we hope to actually have rolled out in the next three to four weeks. The farmers market and the artisan market are thriving. We should have everyone participating by mid to late July. Currently, there are one or two farmers who haven't shown up yet, they just don't have product, but we're getting, even with the terrible weather we had for the first session and actually even the second one, we continue to have good turnout. Highland Parkers come out no matter what, and it's been wonderful to see. The, uh, we've had a number, a couple of events recently. We, our schools out for summer event was a hit with really good turnout, lots of participation up and down the street. We'll have to do more of that sort of thing coming, going forward. There's a new thing we've been doing, the Sat-, this is hard to say quickly, the Saturday Summer Cinema Series, launched this past week with the Thirty-Nine Steps. About fifty or more people attended. Papa John's, Ruthie's Bagels with their hot dog cart, along with some volunteers with popcorn poppers fed the crowd, and they, and we did, we showed the Thirty-Nine Steps against the, uh, the stucco wall of the Main Street building, right there, and people brought their own chairs and just sat up, it was a real kind of party atmosphere, and it was a lot of fun. We were going to be doing more of that in the coming months. You may have seen, we've been working with, um, our volunteers on the design committee to do, uh, I think I've talked about it in, um, previous Main Street Minutes, the engineered soil that is going into some of the new planters and new containers. Twelve new containers are being put around the downtown, and we're calling them permanent planters. They're part of a two-year test for hardy perennials. These kinds of plants and the soil that they're in are what are used on green roofs, like I think they have down at the Environmental Center. They need less water and less care than our annual planters, and they should be, and they should be able to help our planting, our plantings over winter. And they also are potential savings in not having to replant them each year and in needing less water. And we think it's very much in keeping with Highland Park as a green community and one that is kind of on the cutting edge. This is, to my knowledge, a brand-new program. No other town is doing it, um, so if it is successful, we will be sort of at the forefront, and I think it'll bring a lot of, uh, good publicity and so on to Highland Park and show the kind of town we are. The Shop Highland Park Rewards and Loyalty Card is moving forward. We have fifteen or more businesses. The card is in production. I spoke with representatives from the company, and they would actually like to give a brief presentation to council at the next meeting. I'll work with council and the borough clerk to set that up. Vacancies, we are, we have an historic low vacancy rate. We only have two currently in the downtown core, the former Trios and Subway sandwiches. The, uh, this past Friday, or this past weekend, we had two grand openings. Friday, we had the grand opening of Simules Closet, which was a big success. They pulled out all the stops, it was a great show with food, fashion, music, and a lot of socializing. Former Mayor Frank actually was on hand to be the MC, at least for a part of it. Saturday, we had another grand opening, Unite Pharmacy at 75 Raritan. Rashmi Kenny, one of three owners of the brand-new pharmacy, is here, and she'd like to introduce herself and talk about her business a little bit, and I can come back and answer any questions you might have. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to come in front of you and talk about our business. So, my name is Rashmi Kenny, I'm from Unite Pharmacy, and I'm one of the working partner there. I'm a pharmacist myself. Currently, we are on our grand opening week. We opened on June 29th, it was our first day of opening. We are three working partners, three of us are the pharmacists. Our business hours are Monday to Friday, nine to five, nine to seven, and Saturday, nine to five, and Sunday, ten to two. Uh, we are three for partners, myself, my other partner's name is Hetal Kumar Patel, and the third one is Narish Kanani. Um, at the pharmacy, we accept all major insurance plan, including Medicare Part D, and work on compensation claims, and at Unite Pharmacy, we are committed to perform with integrity to improve the patient care. And we also provide the free delivery prescription service to our patients who cannot make it to the pharmacy either due to their illnesses or their busy schedule, so if they wanted to deliver their prescription, we can deliver their prescription too. Some of our services are, we have minimum waiting period, personal and friendly service that we provide, we also do the prescription compounding, flavoring medications, if the child doesn't like the flavor of the medication, we can put the flavor, whatever a child prefer. We also have the onsite vaccinations, so if anyone wants to get the flu shots or something, they can come to the pharmacy, and we can do it right there. We have personalized medication review, twenty-four hours, emergency prescription services if someone is really needs something. We have a 10 percent discount for vicinity citizens. And I also wanted to talk about why we basically did the business in Highland Park. There are a couple of reasons. First is, we see that the town is growing. The second, second one is, the location was basically perfect, it was right on the main street where you can attract a lot of traffic. And the third one is, it was convenient commute for me and my other partner, so those are a couple of reasons. We basically came here, and we would like to do the business here, so, thank you so much, thank you for giving us an opportunity to come here and talk about our business.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
Uh, you're going to start up an artisan market at the same time as a farmer's market?
Correct, it's actually going now, yes.
How are you recruiting artisans? How are we finding them?
We, uh, we have gone to, um, I started with people who had, uh, who had called and asked to be part of the farmer's market. The farmer's market, uh, the Highland Park Farmer's Market is unique in many respects, one of which is that it is a, uh, an NJCFC-approved market, meaning, or certified market. The New Jersey Council on Farms, Farmers and Communities, NJCFC, is a body that audits farmers, and that the, all of the farmers at our Farmer's Market are audited, they pay to be so, um, so that when they represent that this is food they have grown on their land, it's, you know, it can be backed up. I mean, I get reports saying this is the stuff they'll be selling, these are the kinds of things. They may sell food that is not something they grew, but they have to declare that they're doing it. This is, uh, there aren't a lot of markets in and around here that do that, but we are one of them. I'm taking longer probably than you wanted to answer your question, but I wanted to make that portion clear. So I get people calling me all the time, and they would like to do soaps, or they'd like to do, you know, candles, or they've got flavored honeys, or olive oils, or olives, you know, different kinds of things, that all sound fantastic, but they, but, uh, we are actually audited as part of the NJCFC, and we're only allowed to take producers who have been audited and approved by that, by that body. So, I have a long list of people I've been flagging who have called, and I've said, listen, you're not right for our Farmer's Market for whatever reason, but there's this artisan market we're starting up, you might be good for that, and I've been contacting those people specifically. Is there somebody you know that you want to?
No.
Oh, okay. Because, um, I, I, I think that, you know, I mean, we're, um, we had an initial kind of swell of interest, and, um, we've had some people come, and there are one or two who may not be coming back, which we expected, and now is sort of an opportune, perfect time to be adding in more artisans. And we're looking for, you know, handmade, handcrafted, artisanal, you know, handmade stuff. Uh, you know, actually Jenny Chapman, who's our Main Street Board President, but also owns Luda Moon Gate Gifts and Open Moon Toys, has been repping, or on a consignment basis?
No, we just, we, we, we sell particular products that's, it's homemade soaps, they're made in the Catskills, it's all made in the U.S.
Okay.
All national ingredients, we sell that as a artisan market.
And that they'll also be looking to, I think, bring in one of the potters that they represent, a Highland Park-based potter who sells in their shop, will also come there. Pinot's Wine Shop and Gift, um, they do more than wine, and they are, so that they're, you know, some of the jams, jellies, different kinds of things that they have, they've been bringing to the market. I'm currently looking into, I believe that the regulations for New Jersey-based winery, actually pouring samples at a, at a market like this, I think those are a bit less strenuous than most of those kinds of things. I don't know that for a fact, but I'm looking into it, because I think it would be a great addition, and one more way to sort of promote, you know, what's going on in the Highland Park.
Any other questions?
Not if he's going to take that long.
And are you, anything else to add?
Uh, I think, no, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to the classes. Council report, reports, we'll start the, John Erickson?
Tonight's agenda, there is a resolution to support the Dreamers Act, which is an act that would allow children who are born in other countries but have grown up in the United States and are not documented to attend college and pay undergraduate in-state tuition rates. It's a proposal that's going to look at by other towns, including New Brunswick and Plainfield, and approved, and I hope tonight we will as well.
That's all. Okay. Elsie?
Oh. Um, I just want to mention that, um, we're going to be looking at the pinwheel for post again this year. We're going to start that program in September. Last year, we had pinwheels on the avenue, and the project was wonderful, we had great pinwheels that were flying around, it was really decorative, we had a lot of collaboration from the schools, and a lot of residents got involved. It's a great project, and we're looking, we're hoping that we'll do this project again this year. So, be on the lookout, there is more information to follow. That's my report. Have a great summer, everyone.
Councilman Potts, or Gary?
Thank you. I just want to mention that the Senior Citizens Prom this year, which was held on June 6th, almost a whole month ago now, I just wanted to congratulate our Prom King and Queen. King was Joe Terese, and our Queen was Joy Levine, so congratulations to the Prom King and Queen from the seniors for this year. Just wanted to also mention that camp registrations are still being accepted for summer camps. Our registration is up this year, which is a good sign of the excellent programs that we're providing. The camps actually begin next Monday, July 8th. And lastly, the fireworks celebration, fireworks in the park will be held this coming Sunday, July 7th. Activities will begin approximately around 3:30, there'll be lots of live music activities, demonstrations, several different food and beverage vendors there as well, and the actual fireworks are going to start somewhere around 9:15, so hopefully everyone will come out, and hopefully we'll have good weather for this coming Sunday's fireworks. Thank you.
Susan?
Yes, just two items. Good news from our food pantry, in an effort to promote healthful eating, once again, this year, we'll be giving out cash food vouchers to be used exclusively at the Farmer's Market. Each user can get up to two five-dollar cash vouchers, and it was a big hit last year, and thank you, Jamie, the vendors then redeem their, the vouchers at, at Main Street, and so working out really well, thank you. And the other important thing is a new program that we're kicking off, Mayor's Wellness Campaign, has created Walk the Park, and we plan to present one themed walk a month, midweek in the, in the evenings, and for people to get out and walk around a little bit, not strenuous stuff, but Alan Williams, our co-chair of our environmental commission, has offered to guide the first walk, which will be on July 23 at 6:30 p.m., and he'll take people out to the meadows and walk around there. People should meet at the picnic table and benches at South Fifth and Valentine, and then on August 22 at 7:00 p.m., we have our own Steve Busby, an architect, that will take people around for an architecture tour, and people are to meet on Harrison and River Road, and that, that will be, he'll be discussing the architecture of the Livingston Manor area. Some more upcoming walks will include a Shetree Walk, the mayor has volunteered to walk, and, and a couple of other things. We're also looking for more ideas. We'll post a website, I'm sorry, we'll post an email address soon, I believe it will be walktheparkmwc, which is Mayor's Wellness Campaign. So, look for more information on that. Thank you.
Uh, just a brief report, as many of you might have noticed, that you can see some progress on our new public safety building, the steel frame is going up, so hopefully we'll have at least the shell up by the bad weather, and we'll be able to finish off the interior, and be ready to go come spring.
Okay. So now we'll have fifteen minutes of, oh.
Skip the attorney, administrator again.
Like they have them, all right. And the administrator?
Well, I just happen to have a report tonight. No, I just wanted to remind everybody who are coming out on Sunday, there is no parking in the park except for handicap people, that's it. Just a reminder, no parking in the park on Sunday.
Thank you. Borough Attorney?
And no report, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to public discussion. Anyone for a public discussion? There will be another session later, but feel free to get up now. Sure.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Coiler, representing A&amp;E Checker Cab. I came back here, I guess moved back in April, and I just want to do a follow-up, because I, I sent out a couple of emails to Kathleen, and then there's some messages, I don't know if you got back to me, I didn't see anything come back yet.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to find out where we are with that, because it's been like four, almost four months.
Well, my understanding is that there was a request, we understood the basis of your request, and saw the merit in it, but we actually wanted the, the information on paper so that we would have it.
Yeah.
And I guess that's what we were waiting for, essentially.
And then if you can, we can get it slotted on for August, if you can give us that.
I, I did, I sent you, I sent you an email a couple of them, one you replied that you got it.
Yeah, I got the email.
With, which had the, all my bullet points and our, you know, the argument, let's say, for the case. It was all on.
Oh, there was nothing else, that was it, that was the total?
There was like seven different types of, I think, totals.
Okay.
I mean, I have copies over here, I can give them to you too, as well.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I'll make sure that they get them and put it on for August.
And what we'll do, if, just leave what you feel necessary, and we have the conference meeting afterwards, and if we see something that, you know, you know, it'd be nice if we had this information, we'll send it out here, but, you know, it should be no problem getting everything together and bringing it forward for, you know, a vote next meeting in August.
For next meeting in August, okay.
Yep.
So can I just drop it off on her?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Sorry for any confusion.
Thank you, I'm glad you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go.
Thanks, all right. So, should I be back here then, in August, or should I wait till here?
If we have, I would assume so, but if there's anything that we, that's going to prevent going forward, we'll let you know, but, you know, it, it doesn't seem like there should be an, an issue.
Okay. And on the, those letters are my email addresses on there, Kathy's my personal ones, not the cat one, but my personal, okay, thank you.
Okay, now it's good.
Thank you.
Can I ask him a question? Excuse me, sir.
Well, why don't we wait, get the questions all together at one time, and then we can do that, yeah, in that public discussion. Okay, is there any further public discussion at this time? Matt?
Name and address for the record, just. Sure, Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, for the, for the sake of the, the Public Information Committee who did show up for, to be appointed tonight to another term, I just wanted to thank, thank, you know, get this opportunity and thank them, and also thank Mayor and Council for, you know, adopting, you know, continuing adopting a, a policy of communications. I think it's, it's, you know, it's hard to underestimate how, how, you know, profoundly that, you know, important I and, and members of the committee think that is, you know, we are obviously moving slowly, but we have, I think, a, the, the committee that we've assembled is a working committee, it's not an advisory committee, it's a working committee of volunteers that are committed to, to continuing the work that we've already done, and there's a lot of work to be done, as, as you know. You know, so we have, we have, excuse me, you know, in addition to being writers and communicators, we have tech gurus and educators, audio/video experts, graphic designers, we also have institutional representation, like from the Highland Park Public Library, and also links to the business community in Main Street. So I think, we have, we have, in addition to myself, we have three other members who are here, Heim Cohen, Vice Chair, Jamie McCrone, and Laurel Kornfeld, also, also Joe, new to the committee, they're, they're veterans, but new to the committee this year are Valerie Wideman, who, who came on board last year as a writer, but she's from the, she's, she's, she's from the library, and also Saskia Maria, who's a graphic designer, and, I'm sorry, Gary, Gary was already on the committee too, and, you know, we've, we've worked closely with Gail and the mayor and all of you in helping get, in, in helping spread the word. And a major advancement in our efforts this last year was the hiring of a, of a writer in Stacy Kaplan, who I'm sure you've gotten to know, works, works here, and Monica Jackson, and obviously Kathy, you know, they've been huge, you know, it was really hard to, to even get the slightest newsletter out, but they've been, they've, they've stepped up and are incredibly responsive, and, you know, it's, it's just what we needed, so it's, it's great, we have some, you know, we have some big ideas for the next three years, I guess, and we're having our first meeting on the, we're having our first meeting of 2013 on the 25th, we're actually meeting on the 23rd, but that's to talk about the Highland Park news, the print version for the fall, so that's more of an editorial meeting. All are welcome, though, the 25th, though, is going to be here at 7:00 p.m. in the Berman Conference Room, and, you know, everyone's welcome to attend, you know, we, we rely on feedback, and, and we get it, we, and we hear it, and we work hard to make sure that everybody is, that everybody's ideas are best served, so, thank you, that, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for volunteering, it's important. I mean, the worst thing from our perspective is to hear, how come I wasn't told, you know, like, ah, really? But, that's important. Is there any other public discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on, and there will be another session towards the end of the meeting.
I'll read this one.
I'm sorry?
I'll read this one.
Okay. So, I read the first part, and then you read the budget?
I'll just read the first.
No, but I read this first. Item 713, 2002, Resolution to Introduce 2013 Main Street Highland Park Budget and Approve on First Reading and Scheduled Public Hearing Date.
Be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park that the following statements of revenues and appropriation shall constitute the Main Street Highland Park budget for the year 2013. Be further resolved that said budget be published in the Home News Tribune as reported in Jersey, issue of August 2, 2013. The governing body of the Borough of Highland Park does hereby approve the following as the Main Street Highland Park budget for the year 2013. Income: Government Grants $25,000, Special Assessment Bid $157,000, Sponsorships $41,633 for total income of $223,633. Expense: Administration in General $126,521, Program Expense $97,112, Total Expenses $223,633. Budget, Surplus or Deficit Zero. Notices hereby given that the Main Street Highland Park budget resolution approved by the Mayor and Council on the Borough of Highland, Borough of Highland Park County and Middlesex on July 2, 2013, a hearing on the Main Street Highland Park budget will be held at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park on September 3, 2013, at 7 o'clock, at which time and place objections to said budget resolution for the year 2013 may be presented.
Mm-hmm.
Motion? So moved.
Second.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walcovitz?
Yes.
Okay. Item 12, Clerk Reports, Advertising Land Use Ordinance Amendment for Consideration of Passage on Final Reading by Title. So at first, we'll take, have a motion to take up?
I just have to read this statement, then you can do it.
Okay, all right, you can.
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 230, Land Development, has been introduced in writing by, was introduced in writing by the Economic Development Planning Committee, and was posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall for consideration of passage on final reading by title.
Six.
To tick, yeah.
Okay. Motion to take up ordinance on final reading by title. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
No, no, it's a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing on this matter?
I think Alan wants to review it.
Alan, do you want to, you just briefly review it, is that the?
This is basically an ordinance, it basically makes some revisions to the existing RMT-H Zone, which is the residential multifamily townhouse and historic preservation zone. It will allow for mid-rise buildings, the planning board thought that rather than having mid-rises at three to five stories in height, as was originally proposed, they wanted to change that to three to seven stories in height, giving a developer an option to do that. By doing, by increasing the height, that would also help to preserve additional open The ordinance changes essentially, basically help in a number of things. They help to preserve the historic castle buildings that exist now, they would also provide for new connectivity from this site, and actually further down for the borough, to connect with the existing path system that's in the Rutgers Preserve. There is a stream that runs through this property, and a trail would be proposed to make the connection and allow the public to act. make the connection and allow the public to access that as well. Most importantly, this will also enable the borough to achieve additional affordable housing units. We're estimating that approximately 35 affordable housing units could be produced on the site, with the density which is proposed at 12 units to the acre, and the 15% set aside, we're estimating, again, about 35 units. We think that's very significant for the, for the borough. That essentially are the changes. I think the, the planning board also made two other suggestions, which were to include the riparian ordinance as well as the stream corridor ordinance, and referenced that in this, even though the current code subjects every property to these, they felt more comfortable with adding that. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the council? Alan?
There are amendments to the ordinance, are those you just covered, or are there other?
Those were the, those were the only amendments.
Okay.
That are suggested by the, by planning ordinance.
Okay. Are there any, is there any public, if you're all set, there's no more questions for Alan, is there any other public comment upon this item, this motion? Okay. Seeing that there is none...
Patrick.
Nope? Yes?
I just wanted to mention, Mr. President, that the process then would be to have the council move the ordinance for final adoption, subject to the three amendments that Alan just reviewed, and those amendments have been worked into the ordinance, and they're not substantive. So you could adopt the ordinance this evening as amended, and then the ordinance would be finalized, and Joan would publish notice of its adoption. And this is consistent with the, as Alan pointed out, the review done by the planning board.
I was just going to add about the change of the zone line.
Yeah.
As part of this, the current property, there's a split zone on it. So on one side, we have the RMT, the other side, we have the CR, Conservation Recreation. Conservation Recreation does not permit any activity at all, and it covers essentially this ravine. But it would present problems for anybody to develop this property, because if it's a split zone, they would have to obtain a use variance. So the way to help with this is to move the zone line, essentially eliminate the CR zone, and have the RMT take it all over. And the ravine and the environmentally sensitive areas will still be preserved because of the borough's steep slope ordinance, because of the riparian ordinance, and because of the stream corridor ordinance. So I'm very confident of that.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, to do that, we would have to come back with another little ordinance and a zoning map change. In other words, a CME, we would ask them to redraw the zoning map and update it, and then we would just amend that little section of the land use code which adopts the zoning map. And we could do that at a future meeting, there'd be no problem.
So at present time, I'd like to put up for motion the ordinance with the amendments? Do we hear a motion? Some moved.
Second.
Roll call? Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk Reports Introduction of Amendment to Ordinance Naming Middlesex County as Enforcing Agency of Fire Prevention for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title.
An ordinance further amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park 2010, Chapter 39, concerning the Fire Prevention Enforcement Agency, has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title.
Did I just ask for a motion? Okay. Can I hear a motion to adopt or reject as advertised, and advertise ordinance on first reading by title?
Some moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Don't read the numbers, just write the motion title. Save your time.
Okay. Consent agenda. Motion to adopt the following items. Resolution to Approve Change Orders, Public Safety Building. Resolution to Approve Bills List. Resolution to Appoint Housing Authority Member. Resolution to Approve 2013-2014 ABC Licenses, Plenary, Retail Distribution and Consumption. Resolution to Approve 2013-14 ABC Club License. Resolution Supporting the Passage of A1659/S2355 and A3509-S, excuse me, A3509/S2479, Establishing Tuition Equity for Dreamer Children. Resolution Authorizing Settlement Agreement and Release, Gunther Erman and Estate of Paula Samuelson. Resolution Authorizing Title 39 Jurisdiction, Highland Park Housing Authority. Resolution Authorizing Final Payout, Fire Official King Authorizing Final Payout, Fire in Swaham. Resolution to Credit Water and Sewer Account, 238 Harrison Avenue. Resolution to Amend Annual Salary Resolution. Resolution to Approve Change Order Number 1-2011, Sidewalk and Path Improvements to A Team Concrete Incorporated. Resolution to Approve Pay Estimate Number 1, 2011 Sidewalk and Path Improvements, A Team Concrete Incorporated. Resolution to Approve Taxi Operator License. Resolution to Approve Payment to Public Safety Building Architect. Resolution to Credit Water and Sewer Account, 65 Woodbridge Avenue. Resolution Authorizing Payment of Grabber Group Construction, Highland Park Home Improvement Program. Resolution to Advertise for Bids for the Voluntary Sidewalk Improvement Program. Resolution to Authorize Extension of Grace Period for Third Quarter Taxes. Resolution Authorizing Memorandum of Agreement, Police Accident Reports. And Resolution to Approve Pay Estimate Number 10, H&amp;S Construction, Public Safety Building. And so we'll need a roll call?
Motion. Motion first.
Oh, motion to adopt?
Some moved.
Second. Roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Public Information Committee. The mayor appoints the following: Matthew Hirsch, Chairperson, Heim Cohen, Vice Chairperson, Valerie Weidman, Laura Kornfeld, Saskia Maria, Gary Leslie, HPTV Liaison, Jamie McCrone, Main Street Liaison. Motion to confirm? Anyone? Some moved. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any open items the council would like to bring up? We now have a second phase of public discussion, if anyone wants to come up and address the council? Yes, Ms. Picard?
Please, Page 307, Magnolia. First item, I'm sorry, our friend from Main Street has gone, but the garbage receptacles that are sitting in various, actually very appropriate locations, but they seem to be used by people who want to get rid of their garbage, they don't want to hold on to it for a week, and then they overflow, and they lie on the sidewalk. Right, it finally took their receptacle away, because it's been floating all over their sidewalk property.
I'm not following you, I'm sorry. Is this on the Main Street itself, that people?
On the Main Street, well, they're at the corners where the benches and things are. They're filled to overflow. Go by there sometime Monday or Tuesday.
Okay. So in other words, you're saying that the, that we don't seem to be able to empty them in sufficient time to keep them from overflowing?
And people aren't using them for what they were meant to be. If you have a candy wrapper, you want to throw the paper in there. Instead, they're filled with garbage bags.
A handy deposit for household garbage?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's going to be a difficult thing to police, but we'll look into maybe picking it up more often.
In the mayor's newsletter, would be an appropriate reminder for people
Okay.
...to be a little bit considerate of their neighbors. Couple of other questions on this long list that you just read off.
Sure.
One, excuse me, one second. Yeah, 217 and 218, Resolution to Change Order, 211 Sidewalk and Path Improvements. What does that mean?
Those are the north side, I assume I'm talking, those are the north side, the...
The catwalks.
The catwalks, which are sidewalks that run between the streets and between houses.
Ah.
And we're, we weren't able to get enough funding to do all of them, but we have done the side closest to Edison, and I believe they're nearing completion. And that's what those are for. Change orders happen in most construction projects.
I'm very concerned. I'm vision impaired, and I'm a walker, and the sidewalks are not safe to walk, not only because the sidewalks aren't in the best physical condition, the side, people have garages, particularly corner properties, they're not deep enough, they park their cars, they block the sidewalks. There are people who make deliveries, or they come to visit, they block the sidewalks. If you tell them, please, there's room in front, block the driveway, because you're just coming temporarily, but let me walk through.
Mm-hmm.
They're rude about it. What are you going to do about that? Or what can be done about that?
Well, if you have a, the only thing that can be done on, I think, on your part, if there's a certain, if you have a complaint to call it in, that somebody is blocking the sidewalk with a vehicle.
No, I think it's come to the point where people don't care. And...
I think some don't, but I think for the most part, you know, and again, it's probably something that we have to continually have to educate and stress, but it is a difficult thing to get across to some people.
And the other thing that I've noticed is the bricks, which look very attractive on the crosswalks and the streets, they don't hold up to the heavy trucks that go over there, they break, and then they come with black tar and patch, and that's even worse.
And where was this specifically?
Some on, some on Veriton Avenue, where is it, Second or Third Avenue?
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
When you go down towards the bridge.
All right. We'll take a look and see, maybe there was something wrong in their construction that we can learn from.
Yeah, and there are lots of hillside cracks in these things, where people ride over them.
Is there any further public discussion? Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, you're a little late.
Evening. And I'm very late, because actually, I wanted to be here with Elsie earlier today when she talked about the pinwheels for peace, so today I'm not here talking about what I've been here before. Just for the record, I'm Mary Curran, and I'm here as a faculty...
Just for official, your address, please?
Yes, 67 Cleveland Avenue. And I'm a faculty member and Associate Dean of Local Global Partnerships at the Graduate School of Education at Rutgers. And I was hoping to be here with Elsie Foster Dublin when she spoke about the pinwheels for peace, because we just wanted to let you know, the council and the town, that Rutgers has a strong collaboration going on right now with the school district, but also with the borough through the recreation center. And we're working on what we've called the Partnership for Global Citizenship. We're really hoping that the kids who are going through our school system will come out as global citizens. If you think about it, somebody entering kindergarten today will go out into the workforce if they go to four years of college, about 20, 30, and they need to be prepared for, you know, the changing technology and the global links that we have now in our society. So we're doing a lot of projects to foster that for them. And I just wanted to put things in that context as far as the pinwheels for peace. It's really going to fit in with a lot of curricular things that are happening at the school, and so we wanted to show you our appreciation, or just say how thankful we are that the borough has supported that project, and we're hoping it will grow. I don't know if you mentioned anything about the sister school partnership?
No.
But we have a school in Mexico who's also going to be doing pinwheels for peace right now in the fall with you. And in, through the REC Center, in the summer program, we've also been providing Chinese language instruction that happens in the summer camp that you offer through the REC Center, and it goes through the after-school program in the year. We're really hoping to get Chinese in the school in a more regular venue. But I just wanted to support what she was saying and say thank you for the council's support of these projects, and hopefully there might be ways we can work together on this global citizenship initiative. We think Highland Park is unique, perhaps not so much in New Jersey, but just how international we are, both locally and the connections we have outside. So that's what I'm here to speak about today.
Well, thank you.
So thank you.
Any further public discussion? Okay, seeing as there is none, we'll close that, and then I think I will entertain a motion to move to conference meeting? Some moved.
Second.
Okay. This meeting is closed.